Thank you, Jason. Good evening. I call this meeting to order. Today, we have two items on the agenda. I would like to welcome Community Services Administrator Kelly Beamer and Risk Manager Kelsey Turnus, who will present a COVID-19 impacts update. Welcome, and thank you for joining us today.
Thank you, Council President Perez and council members. Again, yes, I'm Kelly Beamer, and co-hosting with me is Kelsey Turnus, the city's risk manager. Before we start the slide presentation, I definitely wanted to extend a really big thank you out to the department directors and managers that have participated in this planning process and have really looked through all of the different services that we'll need to provide as we start thinking about opening up City Hall for public access. And with that, I will turn the next slide over to Kelsey.
Thank you, Kelly. So I want to be very aware of the balance here as we go through this presentation, or I should say, we are aware, that there's a lot of information. And the goal of this public access plan is really to inform, and I want to give the right amount of information, so find the balance between not oversharing, not bogging you down with details, but at the same time, setting the right framework for understanding what goes into the plan and what we need to do, what goals we need to hit in order to come up with a good plan. So I want to start with some, again, some of that framework piece and talk about Labor and Industries, LNI. They are the Washington State OSHA, if you will, and are the ones that have been given the authority to regulate how we go about opening to the public and how we go about continuing our operations that are already in existence. And the program through which they're doing that is Safe Start, and that began on June 8th. As you know, and I'll talk a little bit about the details of those very briefly, I'll touch on those, what Safe Start is and what it means and what we have to do with that. As you know, King County was approved for Phase 2 and entered into Phase 2 on June 19th. And then, most recently, on July 2nd, the governor placed a pause, a two-week pause, on any forward progress with the phases. So that's where we are right now. We're in that pause period. And the earliest that we could move into Phase 3, which is when we will be opening our government services, or limited government services, calculated ones, would be this Friday, July 16th. So I bring that up not to scare anyone, but just to reiterate that we're talking about this at the right time. There is some timeframe to it, so it's important that we're talking about it now. And again, that may not move forward were in that pause period.
Okay, thank you. Council members, I'm sure you have seen, this is the Washington Safe Start phased approach. And as Kelsey mentioned, we're in Phase 2 currently. When we are approved to move to Phase 3, again, we want to stress that the continuing teleworking is definitely recommended for those departments and divisions that continue to do that. Obviously, there's restrictions on the size of gatherings, but as Kelsey's highlighted in the slide here, customer-facing government services can be open. We want to stress, again, that similar to some of our other divisional operations, the city can elect to be a little more restrictive on how it opens, and depending on staffing capacity and resources. So again, this is all part of our evaluation and review through this opening, our building up to the public. We also want to remind council, as I'm sure you've seen, that we need to be flexible because these plans and requirements can change at a moment's notice. So we definitely are staying, like I said, as flexible as possible and trying to come up with contingency plans as we're allowed. And then, we also obviously are looking for what will be the safest, not only for our staff, but when we allow public into our facility. That is our priority. And so as we move forward through this, you'll see some of the efforts that have been already completed and some that we are working on moving forward.
So we, again, I want to highlight those regulations we talked about through LNI for Safe Start. We are required, as employers, to have written procedures. We need to educate our employees. We need to provide the ability to maintain six feet of separation. So that's between employee and employee, employee and customer, and customer and customer. So we need to keep that in mind as we come up with plans for reopening and returning to work. Personal protective equipment, or PPE, there's two sides to this, and I'm going to go into a little detail in the next two slides, just because there's so much to that specific bullet there. We must ensure adequate handwashing and that we're providing the adequate supplies. We have to clean and sanitize, and Kelly and her team, Facilities Team, have been well on top of that piece to it, as well as the supply piece. We're required to screen our employees before physically coming into any of the office spaces, and then we must post signs educating about wearing face coverings and other type of regulations and expectations. So that PPE piece, the personal protective equipment, cloth face coverings have had, as you guys, as you all know, a lot of information coming out about it, and it's not always digestible when we're hearing all various things. So here is what Safe Start regulates for us. As employers, this is the first aspect of this two-sided piece to the PPE part. We are required to supply cloth face coverings to our employees. Currently, we have five for each employee, and it can be any type that meets the minimum requirement, so they have, they could bring one from home, it could be disposable, it could be a bandana or a gaiter that they pull up and down, unless a higher level is required of PPE. Now, the second part to this is that we require our employees to wear them. And the, you know, positive kudos to the mayor, who made the right decision at the right time regarding this aspect of this. Employees are required to wear them, so they must, they've updated the wording to make sure there isn't room for a different interpretation. It now reads, "No employee may work unless that employee wears a face covering when working, except when working alone, or when the job involves no in-person interaction." Of course, there is medical exception, a medical exception that might apply, and we are handling that through the accommodation process, through HR, just like we do any medical accommodation. And that definition of working alone essentially is very limited, involves being in a vehicle alone by yourself, in an office by yourself, in a cubicle by yourself, or in a field or open area by yourself. So for the most part, they flip this definition around to say they must be wearing them at all times, except when. And as we go into the plan, when we look at the public coming into our facilities, I shared this slide, I don't want to get bogged down in it, but I do want to share it because it's important to know that we are looking at this very strategically. The hierarchy of controls is an inverted triangle that essentially goes from the top being the most effective controls that we put in place to the least effective. It's not mutually exclusive, so we want to do as many of these things as possible that make sense and are feasible. Obviously, we can't take away COVID-19, we can't eliminate the problem, but we can put, we can have our employees telework wherever possible, we can have them stay or shifts, we can separate work groups, and for engineering controls, put up plexiglass in order to physically separate the employee from the hazard, which is COVID-19. And then, at the bottom, they're wearing masks. So we're doing a combination of these things when we look at our return-to-work plan and our public access plan. Kelly will go into some details on those.
Thank you. Yes, so back to the hierarchy, then, removing the hazards, obviously, we will continue to reiterate, those that can telework should continue to do that. Again, with discussion with the mayor and department administrators on how, when Phase 3 comes, how we can allow some workers back into the building, depending on their job status and responsibility. The departments have done a great job with the transition with regards to how we offer like online services. We've got CED that's gone completely, almost completely, to online permitting, finance and the billing process, recreation and the virtual programming, for just a couple of examples, but I think everyone's really focused on making sure we continue to make operations move forward. For the workers that are in the essential services, basic operations, that staff continues to report to work, and they are allowed to through the governor's Safe Start approach. Teams have done amazing with staggering start times, limiting the number of people that report to shops or going to various buildings, so that not everyone is gathering at the same time, which isn't what we are allowed to do. And then, as Kelsey mentioned, if they're in vehicles together, they're wearing masks and looking at all of the number of people that we keep separate and also safe. Facilities, as Kelsey also mentioned, has already been installing plexiglass barriers, mainly at like front counter public areas, and then also in office areas that might not have cubicle configurations that would need separation from another desk that might be close to them. As we know, we still need to wear our masks, but to have a mask on all the time throughout the day, if there's ways that we can put up barriers to help with that. Thank you, Kelsey, then, that's what, this is an example of that. It's a little bit hard to see where the plexiglass is. I think you can make it out, it runs along the, that L figure of that desk, so that helps, again, provide that barrier for some of our coworkers. And then, we have been, as you know, making sure that six feet of separation has been continued. We also have, Facilities has been installing throughout City Hall in multiple areas on each floor, sanitizing stations, if you will, which provides all of the cleaning supplies and gloves that coworkers can use to clean their desk areas or their counter areas or things that they would be frequenting. And then, also, Facilities continues to clean all the common areas, the high-touch areas, so it would be like door handles throughout the elevators constantly, more frequently, and then also providing the normal custodial work at all of our buildings, but definitely focusing a lot on City Hall. And as Kelsey mentioned also, city's providing the face coverings, and as well as, we've got some gaiters that are on order as well, some people that wear glasses sometimes, it's hard to have the face coverings that wrap around your ears, and it's a little bit more cumbersome, so we're trying to provide a different option as well. And then gloves, as an example, that also, like for finance, when we do open to the public, if they have to deal with cash, which we know is highly dirty as it is, the gloves will help protect our coworkers with that.
So this will be the last slide before we actually look at the map of what we're looking at that Kelly will go through, but I wanted to touch on the goals that we're looking to accomplish as we put the public access plan together, as well as the return-to-work plans. And I want to also mention that this is very collaborative, so we've solicited input from every division and department. So it has been a very, you know, in order to be effective, it really does need input from all of the various angles, and I do want to assure you that this plan has those. And the goals that we seek to accomplish first and foremost with this plan are the safety of our employees and the public as well. As the risk manager, I would be remiss to not point out that by doing that, we're also protecting our financial assets. We are reducing our liability by really making the hard decisions sometimes to put safety first and making all the right moves in order to protect our employees and the public, so first and foremost, worth saying. Secondly, we want to make sure that we're hitting all of the legal requirements for the Safe Start program and other ones that federally and also the state has put forward. Of course, Renton, we pride ourselves on providing excellent customer service, and we intend to continue to do that and really meet the needs of our residents. It will just look different, and part of that is communicating the expectations properly, and Kelly will probably touch a little bit more on some of those aspects, but we have incorporated that into this plan to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our customers. And then, the last part, reality, is that we have some limitation on what can be done, physical resources, monetary resources, and just plain time of our employees and staff. So all of these goals have been looked at and taken into account with the plan that we have come up with.
So this is the proposed layout right now. It's obviously not totally to scale, but it does show that what we're proposing is three workstations, or service stations, if you will, within the lobby of City Hall. We also have, the configurations there will have cubicle walls to provide some privacy, if you will, desks, technology, and the like that we will need to service our customers as they come in. We do have words noted as a concierge at the top, is what would be a screening area, and that would be people that have either appointments or are potentially drop-in customers would have to go through whatever current screening requirements we are going to be held to. So we also have, within the City Hall, an ingress egress, so we need to make sure that we're also providing the distancing that we need to, so that we've got one in and one out, trying to keep the least amount of touches, if you will, on surfaces and things. We've got what Kelsey was mentioning as far as our outreach to the community when we do open. We'll have it obviously announced through social media. We have worked with all the divisions and will continue to coordinate scheduling, so there'll be certain days that will have appointments that are, will be addressed with the, like CED courts, community services, and then there'll be other days that will have the drop-in customer time available. We'll also have signage that will be outside of City Hall that we're working on in all three languages that we typically post all of our messaging on, so that those that come in will know what the dates and times, like drop-ins are available, or who, and contact information, who they need to call if they need to make an appointment. So we're going to, we're continuing to work through all of our media outlets to make sure that we can notify public when we are available to open and what will be available to the customers. So one last thing on this, as, well, actually, a couple of things. If you come into City Hall, we are, the Facilities Team is working right now on some mock-ups to make sure that we've got the right spacing in there, and then we've got the furniture that will be ordered. Because this is specifically COVID-related, our CARES Act funding will help pay for this or pay for all of it, so we'll be making it look as nice as we can. We anticipate that when we do get to Phase 3, we'll probably be in Phase 3 for quite a while. Going to Phase 4 would, you know, and our termination is going to be close to when we'll probably have a vaccine, because it's, you know, large crowd gathering, and it pretty much opens all of the operations up. So we want to make sure that we're able to facilitate all the operations in the lobby as best we can. We're also working with courts as far as access. They do need to have, it'll probably be late August, early September, where they're going to need to have in-person hearings, so we're working on what that looks like to get their customers, if you will, up to the third floor safely and with visitor passes, and we'll lock the floors down, so that that is the only area they'll be able to access, but that, we're working on that right now as well. And I think with that, Kelsey, do we have?
Sure, it is, yes. And Kelly had brought up, and the mayor brought up a really excellent point previously, that there won't be a perfect plan. Right now, this is, you know, doing, making, coming up with the best plan, given the situation and what we have, so it will be fluid, we'll have to make adjustments and modify as necessary to hit all of our goals and make sure we're serving our customers the best way that we can. I'm happy to give any additional information in the future that anybody would need or provide anything. Looks like council member, oh yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Kelsey. This is, this is a lot of information, and it's great information. I know how hard you guys have been working to keep not just our employees safe, but as well as the public safe when we open the facilities. I guess this is the time when we are all thinking, where were we thinking by putting on the third floor the court, right? Why that was not on the fourth floor? I myself have asked those questions as well. So at this time, I'm going to open the floor for council members to ask questions, and what I see right now is Council Member Benedetti. Please go ahead.
Thank you so much. Boy, I do actually know how hard this work is, and I totally applaud your team. I'm on the, one of the teams that's working for our own organization, trying to get to doing the planning around all of this, and it is deep and hard stuff. So thank you so much. So I was wondering, I have two questions, specifically, what plans there are for the elevator, and I'm not just talking about, you know, for access to the public, but also for employees coming back to work, what the protocols are going to be around the elevator? Is it going to be single person? Are there going to be access to disinfectant wipes or something in order to be able to have a touch-free experience in the elevator? And then, also, the other question I had was with regards to wayfinding for the folks in the lobby, are you going to be putting stickers on the floor and that kind of thing in order to indicate the six feet?
Yes. Thank you for those questions. I will go with the elevator first. We've actually, or elevators, we've already placed in the elevators two stickers, so two people will have access to the elevators, so they're six feet apart in each corner of the elevator, so they're already in there. As staff, and as Kelsey mentioned, staff that come into work, whether they're basic operations or essential services, still have to make sure they're following the screening process, so they don't get to come in, they have to report to their supervisors, you know, to make sure they're not coming in when they're not feeling well or having symptoms or whatever. As far as the elevator process, our Facilities Team has been cleaning them very frequently, and we will have signage on the outside once we do open to the public, if they are allowed upstairs. We have the capability to lock the floors down, and we'll have probably visitor passes similar to our card keys that will only allow them to the third floor. And then, the rest of the staff, because of our system, like we do, you know, if you're in early hours or after hours, we'll just have to badge into whatever floor they're coming to, and they'll have the same, the staff will have the same access that we normally have. And then, in the lobby that Kelsey's got up, yes, we will have the station numbers, so that when people are allowed in after a person has exited, so that we've only got one person at each of the stations, there won't be like waiting areas, that we want to make sure that we're providing that distancing. So the wayfinding and that will be provided with plenty of signage.
Thank you, Kelly. Council Member Hallar.
Yes, thank you. Just to follow on the elevator conversation, what about stairwells?
We have not addressed stairwells at this point. People are essentially passing each other if they are in the stairwells. They're not standing in a closed space with other people. We, as employees, as Kelsey mentioned, have to be wearing our masks all the time, so if we're in a stairwell by ourselves, you know, we can lower the mask down a little bit, if there's somebody that's going to be coming, you know, close to you or passing you, you'll need to have your mask on, as we're required to in City Hall.
Stairwells and hallways will be very similar. They don't allow for six feet of separation, so we will need to be wearing masks and make those encounters very brief.
Thank you. Thank you. Council members, let me see, someone else. Council Member Corman.
Yes, I had a follow-up on the stairwell question. Well, we have a protocol for working the handrails, for cleaning those on a regular basis, because one issue I always have with the stairwells is, you know, people don't want to use the handrails during COVID, but you want them to use handrails in case they trip, so I don't know what the answer for that is.
Our Facilities Team currently, although we're limited in staff, have been trying to get through the stairwells fairly frequently. They are focused more on the, currently, on the elevators and the commonly touched areas, like door handles, bathrooms, and things like that, but that is on our workload as well, so, yes.
I know, I know that under normal conditions, the stairwells are not heavily used, but I suspect they'll be more heavily used when only two people can ride in the elevator, and people will be reluctant to ride in elevators, so that's why I'm asking that.
Yes, absolutely. Good question.
Thank you, Council Member Corman. Council Member Van.
Yes, thank you, Council President. And again, thank you so much, Kelly and Kelsey, for your presentation, and thank you for all your hard work into this. I have a couple of questions, but I'll ask one and see if other council member had other questions. As far as the, because we're rearranging the lobby space, so I have a question regarding elderly use and, of course, folks with disability. Will we provide, providing any type of furnitures or chairs, or is it kind of just a going flat kind of a thing? So just kind of curious accommodation for those folks, just in case if they have to sit or something like that.
Kelly's staff and I, when we mocked this up, we did look at that and very much take that into account, so each of those stations would be, a person would be able to use their wheelchair, and the chair would be able to be removed, and that person could wheel up to the desk. They're all, they will all be accessible. That's an outstanding question that is very important.
Thank you. Yeah, and for them, dearly, there are going to be chairs for them to not wait, standing up, but sitting down.
Yes, yes.
Council Member Benedetti.
Thank you. Actually, Council Member Van got to one of my questions. What we see here is the City Hall mock-up. Is there, are there plans to open any other facilities for public use once we get to Phase 3?
That's a great question. We're going to keep all facilities closed? No, I'm just kidding. We are looking at the Renton Community Center and potentially Highlands Neighborhood Center. We anticipate that the senior center, because of the vulnerable population, will probably remain closed for a little bit longer. In Phase 3, recreational activities can, can begin at about 50%, and with the distancing and the amount of people that are allowed in a facility. Again, we're going, we're looking at, the team's looking at right now, how we contract out for potentially some summer programming that would be outdoors, which would be more beneficial, but we would still have to follow any screening protocol that is the current requirements to enter into a building, and so we're looking at that. But RCC is probably the first one that we will open, but it will be probably more restrictive and a little slower to open. We're focusing on City Hall right now because of the business operations.
And of course, you have golf course that's, that's open currently.
Right, and they have already, they're following all the protocols with regards to current restrictions.
So will Council President indulge me one more question? I'm sorry, I don't have the list. Is somebody else waiting?
Yeah, I have Council Member Van, but go ahead, ask your question.
What about public restroom use?
So are you speaking in City Hall?
Or any of the other facilities that would be opening?
Yes, they will be, we anticipate that the lobby in City Hall will be available for the public that is accessing the building for business. We currently, as you know, we have our restaurants and our parks. Not everyone is open, but most of them are, and we're going through and doing the sanitizing and cleaning on those. So we would, if we So we would, if we open Renton Community Center, we would definitely have to have the restrooms. That's a requirement of building opening. So yes. That was a long answer, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Council member Van.
Thank you, council president. I have two questions. So the first is, in regard to wearing masks, and I again applaud you, Kelly and Kelsey and everyone on the team for looking into and have already did the plexiglass for work stations. And so these stations would have those. But for the public coming in, and I might have missed this earlier, I'm sorry. Is it a requirement that they all wear masks? Of course, with the, if they have a medical card saying they can't, how do we go about accommodating that? Because I believe myself and whole council have received emails from our resident asking regarding concern about wearing masks. So how do we accommodate that if the public, an individual coming in and needing service?
It's a tricky question and a very good one. We will follow the guidance provided by the state at the time. Right now, the guidance that's out there is, as you're identifying, is rather vague. So the only time that the state has given guidance is for supermarkets and other type of services. Because for example, we're not open until Phase Three. And what they're saying is that you can tell the representative of the store, I have a medical condition. You don't identify the condition, you don't need to show a medical card. You simply inform them that you have a medical condition that prevents you from wearing the mask. And they should be allowed to continue shopping. And as of now, that's how we would handle it as well. We would, we would take that input. We would not ask for verification of any kind. And the idea behind that hierarchy of control that we showed for the inverted triangle is that all the other pieces will be in place where, you know, there will be plexiglass. The distancing will already be there so that it'll be safe even without the mask. Or as safe as it can be, given what we're up against. We also might, at that time, choose to provide services in another location. So could the person potentially meet them outside and interact with them? Because that might come about if people simply refused. We're going to want to still provide services if we're able to, but not allow access if they're refusing to put on a mask, for example. So that's a very long answer, not very clear, because not all the guidance is clear right now. But we, we were going to take into account when we make those decisions, the guidance that's in place and the laws that are in place surrounding it.
Yeah, and thank you so much for answering. I know we, a lot of the information is still vague. And I think your answer is very thoughtful and it just, that's my concern with our community members who do have certain medical conditions. And of course, those who aren't willing, or not necessarily willing, but not as comfortable in, you know, wearing the mask, right? Because for whatever reason, whether it's religious or medical, I don't know. Yeah, thank you. Council president, can I ask my other question?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. So in relation to, I guess, the cafe schedule and the spacing, is that, I'm assuming that the cafe will be having, you know, similar layout? Or how are we going about with the cafe schedule and that made out?
We've actually had conversations. We're waiting to hear back from the owner or the operator of that to see how they're going to be able to operate. But they will have to follow the same restaurant slash spacing guidelines. If there's, you know, we may have to mark the hallway so that there's the six feet of a waiting area distancing before they can enter. But we're still working with that operator right now. So we've not established an opening time for the cafe yet.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kelly. Council member Corman.
Yes, thank you. I was going to suggest that we might want to investigate getting some face shields for employees that would, you know, be interfacing with the public a lot. In the event that somebody comes in and has medical reasons that they can't wear a mask, I think. The world supply of face shields is finally recovering. And I think that adds to safety for our employees to have them available if they want to. So it's just a suggestion.
That's a good point. And Kelsey could probably answer if we're, if we're ordering those yet. We also, at these stations, will have the plexiglass that is high enough to protect the workers and the customers that use stations well.
If there's plexiglass, they probably don't need the face shield. But if there's not plexiglass, it might be good.
And I would like to add that we have purchased face shields to allow for more, more options. For example, with the medical accommodation process.
Excellent.
It's worth noting that they're not equivalent. They don't provide the same protection to others as a cloth mask would. But in circumstances where we don't have other options, it's a really good option to have.
Thanks.
Thank you. That's great information. Council members, do you have any more questions or comments? Well, I don't see anybody right now raising their hand except Kelly. Yes, Kelly?
I just wanted to give Kelsey and the directors big kudos. They did a great job. They looked through a lot of processes and spent a lot of time reviewing and revising all of this. So we're all, like Kelsey said, collaborating together. But that group did a lot of work. So big applause to them.
Yeah, thank you to everybody. The way I see it is that we unfortunately have to plan this for a long term. I don't see this being just something that is going to be temporarily. So I know, I appreciate the fact that you guys said, well, we're going to be very flexible and try to figure out how we are going to be moving and adapting and changing as it goes. Because of course, we will, we don't know right now. I very much appreciate that the biggest intent of all of this is again, saving lives and protecting our employees and protecting our community. I said that and I see that council member O'Hara is raising her hand, but I have a question. I know that we have over and over and over asked our employees to follow all the safety precautions that are necessary. Is there is, is there an opportunity for them to be on, to have this? I mean, I know that you guys have provided this information over and over. But how are you going to make sure that all your employees, our employees and the community know what are the basic health, you know, like washing your hands and all of those things?
Well, that's, you're hitting on a fundamental piece to all of this, and that's the communication aspect. And again, there's a lot of information. So how do we get the right information to our employees as well as to the public? In many regards, we want to make sure that we don't become the middleman in some of those really important messages that are best placed with the CDC and with King County Public Health. To make sure that we're not, you know, misinterpreting the information or that we're getting them to the right sources of information, again, because there is so much. Some of the things that we've been doing for our employees are Renton 101s. It's an opportunity through Zoom to give information and share what the CDC is putting out and what public health guidance is. And so we take every opportunity that we can now after sharing this with, with the council members, with you guys. We are going to be, we have one scheduled for Thursday for our employees to walk them through some of the same things and actually in quite a bit more detail. And we've held several of those regarding masks and other things. The aspect about communicating with the public might be more, Kelly interacts a lot with, you know, her team for community services, does a great job with information sharing with the public through communications. Kelly, did you have something to add on that piece?
Sure, yes. Again, we'll definitely, as soon as we are able and we have all of this set into place through multiple avenues, all of our social media, on our website, throughout signage that we've had at City Hall and some of our other buildings as well. And to Kelsey's point, I think HR and RISK have done a great job, not only through the 101s, but have been sending out updates as requirements change. So the, for staff, they have been getting them very timely and making sure that supervisors are following up with all their staff so that they're following the guidelines as well. But they've done a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council member O'Hara.
Yes, thank you. I just want to ask a clarifying question on this lobby utilization diagram. The egress and ingress depicted with the green arrows showing flow into and out of, are those representing the actual, the two sets of doors that are the entrance to City Hall?
Yes.
So the, so I have a couple of, a couple of comments about appointments and drop-in waiting and the waiting area. And so those are outside the building and not undercover, correct?
So this is again, a conceptual, if you will, design of what this looks like. So we have discussed as a team already how we can move lines under the eaves or potentially provide some covered areas. The waiting area may go to the north. So there's eaves that extend by the finance and HR windows. So we could put spacing on the ground so that those waiting there will be undercover. Granted, we are again, because of weather that will change and knowing that this is probably semi-long term, we are looking at some other options on some protection from the weather.
Thank you. And then my second question about this is, Station number three looks like it's going to be a victim of some pretty heavy foot traffic? Because everybody's going to be coming and going past Station number three. Are we going to put in some additional protections for that, for that particular station? Being that there's going to be, everybody coming into the building and leaving the building will be passing that station?
Yes. And actually, all the stations will have activity around them. But to remind council that we're only letting people in to go to a station. So there's not going to be traffic flowing through on a real high ingress and or egress rate. These stations are being fitted for cubicle walls and will have some other protection. This just shows again, conceptually of where the stations will be located. Like Station Three will have to come off of the wall a little bit. So we've got room for staff and then for the customer. So again, this is just showing general location.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Council member Benedetti.
I was just, one final question. Has this plan been presented to the unions that represent the city employees and what has been their take on it? So actually, we've done what we think is one better. They've been involved in the planning process. So they're, they have, they are, have been extremely supportive in plans and in collaboration. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I'm ready to respond to this question, but I'm, I just want more clarification. If you are parking on P1 or P2 and you're one of those employees, you cannot go directly to floor seven. You have to make a stop, right? As an employee? Or you can go directly to your office?
Employees will have normal access to what they have currently. So when we do have to lock the elevators down, when we allow the court visits, that will be the time that the employees will have to use their card, just as they do, like if you come in early in the morning before the building is open, you have to buzz your card to go access to whatever floor you're going to. So city staff will have their normal access to the building.
So city staff will not be screened?
City staff is, because of the communication that's come from HR and RISK from day one and as it continues to change, they are, they have to let their supervisor know that they're okay to come into work.
They'll have a separate screening process. So it may not necessarily be an in-person, three questions being asked or the symptoms questions being asked like we do have outside in this plan. But it is a requirement. So they will continue to, before going into physical spaces, be screened with questions from their supervisor.
Thank you. Council member Corman.
Yes, thank you. Great questions. In fact, it made me think of another one. I know this is, you know, we're fundamentally talking about sort of the physical reopening of City Hall. I was glad to hear that we're working closely with the unions on this. And one of the questions I have, and I don't know if this is quite the right group to address this to, but I'm assuming that maybe some stuff will change permanently. You know, we've implemented a lot of technology and we've found new ways of doing things. And as we've said, this may be for the long haul. Are we sort of remaining open-minded to, you know, that maybe some aspects of say permitting might be permanently different than it used to be? Or that we'll have new, you know, new options that we didn't used to have? Just so that I'm, you know, and I'm thinking with us as policymakers, we're the ones that would probably decide that, you know, the target's either to go back to exactly like what we were or more likely, I think, the target's to go to something new and different with more options than what we had before. But I'm just kind of wondering how much of that dialogue's going on and how much of it's going on with the unions?
So I can answer for part of that. Kelsey has probably some of the union background on it. But the mayor and his team, the administrators are talking about that all the time. And again, depending on what Phase Three looks like for opening, what requirements, how well the mayor thinks the city is doing business. And if we can continue, to your point, people teleworking, and you're right, technology's changed immensely. So there are a lot of things that we'll continue to consider and review as we move through these phases. Kelsey might have the union side of that, Kelly?
Well, you know, I think that would be a larger conversation that we would want to have if positions are changing or the tasks that people do change. I think that would, you know, be probably outside of what I have, the knowledge I have now regarding that. I do know that the example you brought up is the example that I've heard for permitting in particular. From the customer service aspect, the feedback that they've been receiving is that people are really excited to learn that they can do that all from their home and how easy it actually is. So there have been some really positive things coming out of this, as well as some of the teleworking aspects. There's productivity that has increased.
Good. Yeah. And part of the reason I brought it up is I, you know, I just want to say that from where I sit, I'd like to maintain that flexibility, you know? And then that's maybe a silver lining, if there is one, in this whole terrible tragedy. But that we're learning new ways to do things and some of those might be better for the future or nice options anyways for the future. We, I do understand that not everybody's, you know, super handy with technology. So we're going to, we're going to have to reestablish the ability for people to walk in and things like that. But I mean, I will say that one of my sons is in the process of, you know, going social distancing, but visiting his software office because that company's decided they're going to give up their lease on their software office. Everybody's telecommuting and they've decided that they don't know when this is going to end. So they're just going to keep it that way and give up their office. So I thought as sort of the executive management of the city of Renton, we should at least be open to if certain things work virtually very well, you know? Maybe having that as part of our target in the future. So I don't want that to be misunderstood. I'm not advocating that we get rid of sections of City Hall. But rather that when we, that we don't just ask all of you to get us back to exactly where we were, that we would pick a good, appropriate target. Thanks.
Thank you, council member Corman. I think that, that was a great comment and question. I have been wondering the same myself. I do see the positives of this a lot. That I really believe and I know that all of you as well, that we will never go back to the way our life was. A lot of people have to challenge themselves to learn how to use, you know, the technology and how they feel so comfortable that we are going to have to modify our new normal to become our permanent normal for a lot of situations. That's the reason why I like this plan. Because as I said, in the, in the future, I think we need to start thinking about what is going to be our long-term plan, especially with the facilities. I mean, if we're going to keep I mean, if we're going to keep having stations forever or what are we going to rethink about? What are we going to bring to the lobby? Or we're going to, I don't know. I mean, I'm just, this is implementation. But I like the idea of that this is going to be flexible and we are going to be working towards what is going to be the best solution for everybody. Again, not just for our employees, but as well as for the community. And with that, I will ask if any other councilmembers have other comments or questions regarding this issue. Seeing none, I want to very much thank you, Kelly and Kelsey, for your presentation. This was great. And I will move to the second item in the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, I do want to welcome Chief Edvin Belli. Oh, I'm sorry. I did something with my screen that I missed everybody. Okay, I'm back. So learning technology, right? That's, I'm still in stage one. So this is a continuation of our presentation of last week. That was Police Department Policy. And Chief, thank you for joining us again today.
Thank you, Madam President.
We leave some questions, you know, on hold because we run out of time. So I remember having Council O'Hara at the time with her hand raised. And I don't remember which other councilmembers, but I will ask Councilmember O'Hara to start this section with her question. Thank you.
Madam President, you have a better memory than I am, than I do. So I will, I will wait for the, for somebody else to ask my question. How's that?
That's good. So someone has a specific question right now that they want to ask for the chief. I don't see anybody raising their hands, so I will.
Right. And this, Councilmember McCurran had.
Oh, Councilmember McCurran, sorry, I didn't see you. Councilmember.
Thank you, Madam President. It was my recollection that you had a question that you wanted to ask. So I was going to defer to you.
I do, but I, you know, I'm very polite. So I wanted to give the floor to you guys before I start with my question. So my question was more related to the presentation about the training for implicit bias. If we have learned something in this last month, if I'm going to say that, I think I have learned it since I was born, is that we have a lot of work still to do. And training is important, and we have done a lot of training. And I have been, some of those trainings with the police department as well. And as well as I have been in the first forums and meetings that the department had had in the last six years. I myself participated in a lot of those, not just in the inclusion task force, but also I participated in some of the RAB meetings and another one on the Latino forum, and other ones in radio. And I know, I have seen firsthand all the work that we have done to provide services to our multicultural, multilingual community. But the reality is that we have to do way, way more than we are doing right now. And one of the biggest conversations today in the table is implicit bias and how to recognize those and how to be active, respecting everybody and being able to communicate with absolutely everybody. The good thing that I see in this table and in this city is that we have had these conversations for a long time. So when I heard in other tables that people say, oh, these are uncomfortable conversations, I don't think they're uncomfortable conversations anymore in the city of Renton. I think that they are real conversations. So said that, I know that Benita has been working with you, Chief, to implement different trainings for the police department. What I personally would like to see is more, a little more personal training directly with your department and the effort and not just identifying that those implicit biases, but what's going to be the actions that's going to be taken at the department level? And what is the plan to, if not fixed, at least start acknowledging some of the white privilege and what we can do about that to do what we expect people to do, which is feeling very, very comfortable around our police officers and understand that us, as people of color, blacks and indigenous and immigrants and refugees, you are there to protect us and that we are in the same page. At least this is going to be our intent. I know that it's a huge task to take over, but I think that is the right move. So I want to hear a little bit more of your thoughts about this conversation that we initiated a long time ago.
Okay. You want me to talk about the training?
I wanted to talk about the thoughts that in the future, what are we going to do in the future for implicit bias?
So there's several things. Obviously, we got sidetracked. Benita was, this year was going to do Stage Four or the fourth iteration of our training. But the academy has stepped up. As a result of the 940 and in the history of race and policing, they have started training that we now require each year. And it is about the history of race and policing and going back to how police have had, you know, this bias and racism that's been systemic in the system. So that is going to be a portion of it. That's going to be specific through the law. The state will be going through that kind of training. And I can see that expanding with new legislation. But Benita and her work here, that's going to continue. We talked earlier, I think it was in the last week's meeting, about what was it going to look like? And I think this is something that we can do each year as far as part of our training. It's already required as far as crisis intervention training and some of those things. So we can introduce this. And working with Benita, maybe now we can find those specific topics that we need to address. Part of the bias training is going through your own systems, which we have done before. But now to really get a different look by use of those teams that we have, whether it's the RAB group we met a little bit earlier last week. We have an upcoming meeting, the Inclusion Task Force, to look at some of those policies and practices through that level. So the training will continue on a yearly basis. Some will be state. But I'm looking more forward to creating it ourselves with Benita and her group as far as what we really need to address. And it could be more specific to law enforcement, the classes that we had with Benita. You know, we were separated. So there was a, probably, I don't know, Benita would have to say if it was a different conversation. But I would imagine some of the concepts heard a different conversation from the law enforcement side. So some more specific training towards law enforcement in that relation in addition to the academy training that's going to be provided.
Thank you, Chief. I see that Benita's on the line. Benita? I would like to hear your thoughts about the work that we're doing with the police department. I very much appreciate the words of the chief. But I really want to hear your thoughts about where we are, not with the full city, because we are right now trying to talk about the police department. Where we are, you and I, we have had this conversation in the past about training goes to some level and then there's the daily application of what you learn and you acknowledge. So I, again, we have said several times that we have still room to grow. But I wonder if you can share with us, what is your plan? What do you think we really need to do to improve what we are doing right now in a very dramatic way?
Thank you, Council President. You know, I think, here's what I think. I totally agree with what the chief said about really looking at our own annual training. Because the academy, in my experience, does top-notch training. There's an extremely talented director there. And, but it has to be general enough to cover departments across the state. And I think that we have some unique attributes in Renton. You know, we're a city, we're 54% of our population are people other than people of European ancestry. We have many different languages spoken. And so I think that the best thing that we can do is to really focus on what are the needs of Renton. The chief is right. You know, we've had, we've done training both ways with his staff. The day staff pretty much went to sessions with all the other employees in the city, which is by design, is a way to build bridges across departments. But we did have, I felt, deeper conversations with those sessions that were, for example, in the evening and off-hours where there were just police. I think there was a greater sense of comfort there, a greater sense of opening up, a greater sense of sharing some of their concerns and so forth. And that's, you know, really where we want to go. And I, you know, I know from talking to officers on the force that training goes beyond the classroom in the Renton Police Department. In other words, when they talk about things such as de-escalation, it isn't just, doesn't just happen in training classes. And Chief, I can't remember what you call it, but those morning briefing sessions where you have the co-group together or at the start of shift? What do you call them?
They're shift briefings.
Shift briefings, right.
Before each shift, yeah?
Right. So very often in those shift briefings, they're discussing specific examples of situations that did occur, having conversations along what would you do if, using situations as a learning springboard to really keep that conversation on the front line. And it really emphasizes on a day-to-day basis the importance of those principles. And the chief covered in the last session, like the eight can't wait. All of those principles are very much on the front burner in the department.
Thank you, Benita. Councilmember Prince.
Thank you, Madam President. Chief, so I remember several years back now, when we were in better budget times.
Yeah.
The department did some work out of state trying to recruit diverse candidates from the department. And I know that budget times aren't flush right now. But do we have any strategies, what we can do in-state to try to get diverse candidates? That's part one. Part two, has there been any talk about the cultural bias in testing from public safety testing?
Yes, to both those questions, sir. We've been working on it. But the diversity, we did flyers out in different states and was somewhat successful. But this one, as far as diversity, we're kind of taking a page out of some other folks' books of what's been successful. And these are low-cost, no-cost things. And that's the social media, but also some strategies internally with some of our black and brown officers that have asked to be part of, I don't want to give it away, but we're going to be starting a project in the next couple of weeks that kind of goes back into those communities and those meeting places and to use our officers here that want to reach out and recruit externally. So we planned on doing more social media and using the work groups that we currently have in the specialty groups and to get into the more diverse communities to provide, you know, coupons for testing, some other things that would encourage them that might have been a roadblock before, to kind of remove some of those things to get them in. But one of the most successful ways to recruit that we have seen from other agencies and both internally as well, is our own officers. Whether their own social media, some of these other things. Bellevue has been wildly successful with one individual. He is an Asian officer that skateboards, but he's got a huge following on social media. I don't know that we have any skateboarders. But something that shows that relationship where they have some following, some influence, and at least to start that discussion. So to use some of our own internal folks that have friends, that have a following, that they use them to get our message out there, just to start the conversation. So that's some of the things that we're going to be doing. This project that's coming up, there's only two states in the country that I believe are doing it. So I don't want to give it away. But it's a recruiting and it's a relationship type. Meaning it came from our community programs, folks. Stephanie Hines, she came up with it and I just thought it was brilliant. So I'll be speaking more on that. But the PST was a big one that we talked about. The other big testing, Seattle would test their own. They also have a huge, well, they did have a big budget for those things. So Public Safety Testing and National Testing Network, I think, are the two that are predominantly used. So we called and asked for those that use National Testing Network to find out and get materials from PST themselves to find out what is their recruiting strategy? What are they providing? How is their test? Has it gone through the bias test? And so we've gone through different agencies. We've seen more folks use PST. I'm not saying it's the right way, but we're still looking. More people use PST. And King County had done the National Testing Network and they went back to PST. I don't know if that's because it's a larger pool overall, if it does provide a more comprehensive test. But we are looking at, you know, those are the kind of the three models. You know, you test your own, it's just, it's pretty expensive and time-consuming versus the National Testing Network and the PST. We're really looking at not so much the, you know, the cost or anything, especially if we're going to do encouragements like waivers, but that, you know, what's their pool? What are they, what's their audience? What are they bringing in and, you know, going through the biases as far as their testing? So all they do right now is, you know, when we ask, okay, what's the lens that this has gone through? And we get a lot of paperwork back that says, hey, we've had these people review it or it's been reviewed here, or it's passed this national bias test. We just have to get more educated on what that means when they tell us that their test is better. So we're still with PST. Our laterals that come in are simply go in and we test them ourselves. So they're not going through that PST. We have a few folks that have put in and they just go to our website or Facebook or however they do it. They fill it out and then we bring them in for an interview. So. Yep.
Thank you, Councilmember Prince. Great question. Councilmember McCurran.
Yes, actually, Councilmember, that was the, Councilmember Prince asked a question about testing bias I wanted to get at. Because that chart you showed us showed not only that there was a lower pool of Africans as we discussed last week, but not only that, that the failure rate was higher both for no-show and on the testing. So I mean, clearly, there's some work to be done in that arena as well. So I will ask a different question. I jogged my memory while we were sitting here about the other one I had last week, which concerned the crisis intervention training. And the question I had on that had to do more with, it got me thinking about when I was on the Human Services Advisory Committee and there was conversation going on about having embedded social workers and such. And so my question with that is, while that training certainly, I think, is valuable and helpful, have we explored putting social workers on the front lines when a call for service is clear that someone who is an expert has a master's in social work in that field would be perhaps better equipped to deal with that situation than an officer? Which granted, I mean, I compare it to like, and I think our EMTs are great, but I don't want an EMT to do heart surgery on me.
Right. Yep. So we looked at, like, so when they go out now, when our special teams go out to the camps and engage with folks, we do bring contract services, some volunteers, Catholic Community Services. They have some groups to provide those services and follow-up services. But I agree 100%. We're looking at different models. You know, Oregon has a very famous one that's kind of going around from Eugene. It's called Kahoots. I think, Benita, you had sent me some information on it. But Olympia had started a similar exercise. Kahoots down in Eugene, it cost them about $1 million. It's onsite, on-staff persons, mental health counselors. And Olympia spent about $800,000. So looking at different models, the problem that we've run into, because up north, Red Men Kirkland, there's a couple of them. They share one MHP. They got a grant and they share this individual that works part-time. The only problem when you have those calls, there's still an officer that has to go, whether it's, you know, a suicidal or a knife. But the best part is the wraparound services. Once you establish that it's safe, there still may be an encounter. So it's not foolproof, that officers still have to engage. But once they leave, that that individual can stay and maybe make those connections. So we have a crisis intervention team that we use. It's actually located at Redline right now that King County has. So when we have those events, whether it's the crisis communication line or the crisis team, contact team, they can respond and help us and provide those services. So there's hybrids that take place right now. But each call usually generally starts with an officer that's responding or a request from FIRE to go there. So right now, we're looking at, because it would be great to have an MHP, to have them here, because then you have that kind of catalog of continued service. And, oh, this person, you know, we get data from that individual. It says this is a mental health issue, so don't, you know... don't, you know, we'll send this resource or that resource. Those things are available, it's just trying to create that here in Renton. Because we do have resources, King County has provided some, we have Catholic Community Services, but something on a more permanent basis is something that we're looking at and what that would cost. I hope that answered your question, sir. Yeah?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Benita.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Chief, for coming back this week, we really appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
So, last week, we talked about some of the areas that you were seeing where we could expand our accountability, and getting to, tying that concept with some of the questions that we've had around budget, are there areas that we are exploring in this budget cycle that might expand our accountability, and is it something that we can afford, given that we are in a budget situation that we sort of unprecedented?
Yes. So, well, the budget, as you're aware, like, we've canceled all our training travel, I mean, we have no budget right now. So, we have not looked at any kind of, any additional resource or plan. We have, you know, there are systems that we have, you know, body cameras and things like that, that we have done the research, but something more towards accountability, we've looked at a few different things, and it really has to do with data gathering and sharing, the transparency. Councilmember McIrvin had mentioned, you know, putting some stats up, and we're looking at doing that. You know, body cameras would obviously be great for accountability, but to put forward our statistics and have discussions and work groups about our policies is something that we're looking at for the low-cost, no-cost type move, but something more permanent is something that we'll look into, I don't know what, at what point we'll be able to present that, if it's a, if it's a cost issue, but just having it in our bag, you know, we can say, hey, we're ready, we can present this, and this is what we're looking at. So, as far as accountability, putting our information out there, putting our policies, and maybe having some data collection, and then using that for conversations within the groups we're creating is what we have planned right now.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Chief, some of the questions that we have received has to be with community engagement and community oversight. You mentioned last week that we have already, you have, we have already a volunteer that is helping us with the community oversight. You mentioned something like that, I don't remember. Did you see that?
Yes, ma'am, we have, we have three members that had volunteered to be part of the officer-involved shooting, our Valley Investigative Team, to be members there.
Yeah, and just to be clear, I know that one of them is a woman of color, she's an immigrant, and the other two, I don't know them, but I know that you have looked for diversity to be at that table.
Yes, ma'am, yes, we have, and we've had to use one already from a May involvement shooting that we had, and she has been a part of that and went to my briefs, gets weekly updates from the case detective, that shows the press release before it goes out. So, this is a community member, they do sign a nondisclosure agreement, as it's an active ongoing investigation, but they are there to represent the community and see the process. So, in the end, the transparency to legitimize the process, to say they followed the rules and I did not see anything, you know, I didn't see them go any other direction. I will say that that process, you know, it come from 9:40, we were the first in the Valley to start that, as far as our investigative team. So, we were the first to do that, I know Tuck was doing interviews right now, our chief had just done those federal ways, the same, so we had three members that had gone through that process, and that was a model that the state was adopting, our model of how they do investigative, independent investigative shootings. So, that could change, and that's fine with me, but, you know, it had started with our model of somebody else completely outside of the department looking into these uses of force.
Yeah, I very much appreciate that answer, because I know that we have had it before in the Valley, we were the first one to implement this oversight, and now there are three other cities that are trying to do it on the Valley, and I just wanted to make sure that my information was right.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Councilmember Van.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Just on the same line, Chief, I have a question. As far as the outreach and the process for community members to be a part of this Valley Investigation Team, what is the process like, and what is your outreach?
So, we had sent that out in February, we had put that out on our social media, we had also asked and was helped by Ms. Benita Horn, she sent it to the Inclusion Task Force, the Hispanic Task Force, the Asian Task Force, and the RAP, to put it out to all those different groups to say, hey, here's a voluntary, so that was, that was the method at the time, that was back in February that we had sent that, the latter part of February.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Van. Another question that normally comes also to the table, Chief, is about from the diversity of our police force. I do remember six years ago that we said this was a big, large, a big conversation at our table, and Councilmember Prince has reminded me of that, that we intentionally changed the way we recruit, to just chose all the, all the people that have applied in the last three years, and how many of them have been recruited, depending on race or ethnicity. I know that in the last six years, we have changed the looks of our police department very, very radical. Could you talk a little bit more about this, and a little bit of details about, I know that you already explained to Councilmember Prince how you went doing this, but can you talk about how much this has changed already in our department?
It has changed. Before I was, came up to the second floor, there was a big effort, so this is going back a few years, but there was a more of an effort for recruiting. Before, if you wanted to be an officer, then you would hunt down some website, or phonebook, or magazine, like I did, and you'd find out. So, there's more of an effort where you have a position, currently it's Sergeant Jason Trader, where we work with human resources, Brian Sandler, and we make an effort to recruit. And so, we have made, you know, going to job fairs and putting ourselves out there, we have a diversity team, a recruiting team, that's made up of black, brown, female, LGBTQ, you name it, we have that here in Renton, and they will go out to these groups and these job fairs, and they will recruit, sandwich boards, flyers, you name it. So, there was, there was a definite effort that made a difference. Right now, it's, you know, it's specific to those areas, who goes to job fairs and things like that. What we're trying to do now is be more community involved, more community-related, using people that know people in the community, friends, relations, family members. You know, we've worked with the schools and Renton Technical College, and some of these others that are a little bit closer, and we've been successful with some Renton folks, most recent hire was a Renton resident. So, we have made big changes as far as just even initiating, excuse me, recruiting, because it wasn't a thing before. So, now, through the social medias, but now through our social networks and our groups that we create, we're going to use that to try and do more recruiting, and get to know families and members. I think we're going to have some pretty good success. I know that we've had a few people that have put in for Renton recently from some of the other agencies, based on what's going on and how Renton has kind of stood out. I know if we're lucky, we might have our first Somali officer, so that would be really nice. So, some of these things, I know it takes years to turn a boat kind of thing, but we've made some big strides in making just more of an effort to kind of find those groups, and it's starting to pay off. I think we'll see a bigger change in the years to come. Hope.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember McIrvin.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. The questions about lateral hires sparked another question I had, which is, in the previous presentation, you mentioned on defensive tactics training, the, what we don't teach. What do we do to retrain people that may have learned things that aren't in line with our policies and practices?
Yep, so that's always a tricky one, especially with the lateral, sir, I'm glad you caught that, because we get folks from, you know, I don't want to pick an area, but it's not Washington State, where law enforcement's different, and you have to go through, and the first thing they do is three weeks. Our latest officer, he went through the academy for five and a half months, but the first thing we do is kind of indoctrinate or provide them the Renton culture for three weeks. So, our newest officer will begin, you know, next Monday and do three weeks of policy training, defensive tactics, firearms, our core values, and go through everything that kind of sets them up, because when you have to make a decision out on the street, sometimes it's not written in a book, so you have to go based on your ethics, your values, what does the community want, what's expected of me. We call it, we call our values vetting criteria, when there's not a clear answer, you know, is it professional, is it, you know, do you have integrity, those kind of things to help them make those decisions. So, three weeks of that training will take place where defensive tactics is covered, which use of force, no matter where you go in law enforcement, it's a big topic, so that's one of those things that's really, really heavily trained. What can I do? You know, the difference between us not having neck holds versus somebody nearby having neck holds, that's discussed, you know, we don't do that here. These are the alternatives we use. De-escalating tactics means, you know, instead of one officer, it's two, so you don't need to do those kind of aggressive maneuvers. So, they will go through three weeks, but then they will spend probably another five months in training with another officer, and each one of those officers, they'll have four field training officers, will then, you know, go over each of those policies or encounters that they go through, they're evaluated every day, they get a, they get a grade sheet at the end of each shift for about five months, that makes sure that what we've taught them is being ingrained, that the positive behaviors are being reinforced, reinforced, and those that don't fall in line, those are removed. And we have, we've had, you know, let go lateral officers before, not so much based on their training, but the difference in law enforcement from the East Coast and the West Coast is quite large. So, their ability to, you know, one of the first questions we ask is, you know, what do you feel about community? What's important about community, and how does the police, you know, what, you know, what's the role of police in the community? So, depending on that, if they see the connection there, they do really well. But sometimes it's like, hey, if you want to see me, you call 911, that's quickly weeded out through the training process. So, hopefully that answered your question again. I start to ramble, you know.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Van.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember McIrvin, you took my question, but just regarding to the presentation, I, just, it's a yes or no, because I wasn't really clear from last time, in regarding to the use of chokeholds, the neck holds, are, is it banned in the city of Renton, or do we use that, or is it that is not being trained?
It's not being trained, we don't use that, but it has to, so when you put something, or people ask, why is it still on the book, under deadly force? To use, and we don't, chokeholds, we do not use, we don't use those, it's called the LVNR, it's kind of semantics, lateral vascular neck restraint, which is the, you know, the cutting off of the blood flow to render a person incapacitated. So, a lot of agencies have that on a lower level of force, you know, the continuum of force. If somebody's fighting, they might be able to use it. We have it at the level of deadly force, where the only other option is a firearm. So, the problem, if you put something on there that's completely banned, if an officer was in a situation where their firearm was let go, and that's the only thing they can do, can they now be, you know, sued, can the department be sued because they violated our policy? So, it's at such a level, which a lot of agencies have done, so that it's, you know, it's the last risk or last resort that you can do besides using your firearm. So, if it's chokeholds and things like that, it's the wording of it, no, we don't authorize that. Even the LVNR, we only have a handful of specialty team members that are trained that can use that, but the rest of them are not trained, we do not train on it, so.
So, we do use that, but only specific officers who are trained, and that is considered deadly force?
Correct.
Right, up to that level, okay.
I would guess we have five or six officers, they're part of Special Unit SWAT, because we don't train, yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Van. Chief, yes, do you want, do you have another question?
Yes, yes.
Yes, 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 I'm sorry, I didn't hear you have questions.
Yeah, that was the question, because Councilmember McIrvin took my other question. So, this is just for general information there, that I would like to know, what are some ways that Renton Police Departments are doing, or ways or programs that support officers, and especially officers of communities of color, and within the department? So, once you have recruited folks into the department, what are ways that, as far as retention, but then the supportive network that you can, that do you provide? What are some programs or some things that you do to support officers of color?
Well, we do not have anything that's specific to color, just officers within the group, and that would be, you know, we have an athletic league, we also have a peer review or peer support team that offer those kind of things, especially when people, in times like now, when you're having either financial or mental stress or something like that, our peer support team is usually what joins in. Employee assistance is something that's offered by the city itself, we found it more valuable to have our peer support team do that. But one of the things that we are talking about to your question is having our, our black and brown officers, you know, you have the Asian community that's reaching out to our Asian officers, to reach out to them, to go out. Something similar internally, I have made conversations or emails specifically to them during this time, to make sure they have what they need and understand what they're going through, but there's not a program that's in place just for our black officers during a time like this.
Thank you, Chief. Well, during the last three years, I think, we have been discussing in the council, the training facility, and I'm gonna give credit to Don Person, because Councilmember Don Person that retired, make sure that all the council members understood how important it was to have a training facility that was state-of-the-art, because that was going to save lives on the long, on the long run. As many as you may know, council member, for the benefit of the public, council member, Don Person was a police officer in Renton as well. So, since then, the council decided to fund a training facility that is in our third floor, and this year, the beginning of the year, we have a presentation about this one. Who else in the Valley, or in the cities that are around here, have a training facility like the one that we already have in Renton? And if you can go a little bit of how much it helps to have a training facility like the one that we just opened in Renton?
Yes, I'd say the academy, only the state academy has something quite similar to what we have. So, there's no, nobody in the Valley has anything quite like that. Kent has its own space, it's a little bit more, they share it with FIRE, but nothing that's even, that's similar to Renton. So, we have a classroom, we have a simulator room that helps us with the de-escalation, shoot, don't shoot. I just reviewed our policy and the program that the officers are going to be going through training, where they're going to be going through a few scenarios of a situation where some agencies might feel it's a shoot situation, but here in Renton, it's not a shoot situation. So, the idea of reinforcing the proper decision-making through a simulator is priceless, and we can put people through massive repetitions and different scenarios, we can create them, and then the defensive tactics room, where we actually have somebody suit up and put them through live scenarios, or just proper practice, you know, the proper practicing, the proper technique and decision-making. So, having the simulator is a fast, very specific way that we can put people through specific situations, scenarios, things that you would see on TV, and guide them to making the right decision, whether it's calling for another officer, or standing behind cover, or some of these other things that are practiced in de-escalation. It does make a huge difference. Our policies and our trainers are top-notch, and I think most of you, you know, have heard me talk about them, and how successful Renton has been compared to other cities with low uses of force, with low engagements and things like that, low injuries, those kind of things is a direct result of our training curriculum, the policies, but mostly the cadre that provide the training. And so, they do a fantastic job, they're very topical, we'll see something happen out in the news, it could be anywhere in the United States, they bring it here, they chew on it, digest it, and put it out into a training plan, so it puts our officers in the exact same scenario, and make sure that they do what's within policy and the right thing to do in that situation. So, I can't say enough about our training space and what you've authorized, and our training cadre that are able to go up there at night, during the day, morning, you know, to be able to use those and practice proper techniques and go over training programs, it's been fantastic.
Thank you, Chief. Does any, if any, Councilmember has any more questions or comments? Because I don't want to take all over the questions, and nobody else had opportunity. because I do have more. So Chief, I want to talk a little bit about community engagement. I do believe that in every single situation, coming up both a two-way conversation with our community is very, very important to the decisions that we make as a city. And I do also believe in empowerment of community members. I do believe that we cannot do this job by ourselves. We always going to need the voices of the leaders that are out there helping us. I know that, that Benita, you have worked very hard. And even Chief Melosovich, I remember, and engaging specifically our youth and our African-American youth in several conversations and with the help of the Cry Out as Well organization. I have been in some of these conversations and some of these conversations have been very eye-opening for our police department. I remember some tough conversations that we have at the beginning at the Renton High School six years ago. What is the plan for keep doing this? What is the plan to keep bringing those voices to the table and to tell us what they think that we are not doing right or the things that we are doing right? Or what can we modify our approach? And especially with the new generations to understand what is policing and for police to understand what is, where they come from and what their fears and what they don't trust us if they don't trust us.
Well, I can tell you that, right, we've already had, I've had a couple of meetings, one specifically with RAP and then separately with some of the members of RAP. I know Dr. Smith and Benita and I met last week to talk about what we were going to talk at our next RAP meeting. And each, you know, each of the feedbacks that we had received, and Madam, you were there at Renton High School, was the generational difference between the youth and the adults. So we've been engaging and we've done it for years with the adults through our different venues. We have coffee with the chief. We go to neighborhood associations. We have lots and lots of venues that we used before COVID. Now, no doubt about it, this really throws a wrench into things because our, you know, our money was with, you know, personal conversations in person. We did one at Boon Buna that was fantastic where we covered uses of force. And so we're going to continue those community engagements. But to get to the youth, we have some SROs that have fantastic relations with different work groups in the schools. There's a lot of discussion about cops in schools and a lot of pushback as far as us being there. So I don't know what that will look like. I know that, you know, I've spoken with the superintendent as far as the SROs and them being at the school and what it will take. But our, our connection to the youth has got to be some type of program. Usually the schools, Cry Out was fantastic. You know, it was, gosh, Celestine, you know, he was the first one to start that and to invite us in and then Christopher, you know, to have us in those programs. So that, you know, not being there in person kind of throws a wrench into things. But we just have to go based on the relationships that we're creating. We're going to open the social media. We're going to open up our, our efforts in talking with the community in that way, but through RAP and the Inclusion Task Force to start the engagement. But to focus on the attendance, you know, just recently, the Inclusion Task Force started having the high school, you know, the high school people come in, and that's been fantastic. But to, to use that, to say, hey, let's get, can you start a meeting through your rent, through your, your school where we can create a conversation? You know, do you have classmates where we can meet on a Zoom call and discuss certain things? You know, we just have to set the table, but we have to use the contacts that we have now to invite them. Because we have the, we have the technology, you know, meeting in person's not necessarily something we can do right now, but once it is, we'll host parties. Our SROs have the Teen Academy where it's been crazy popular. We've had a lot of the kids come in and they're from mostly diverse backgrounds, very diverse. And they trained with us and they got to go through and see all the different things. So those plans will continue, the engagements that we offer or the programs that we have. But as it stands now, we just have to go through the contacts we have, the venues and the conversations and set the table and create an opportunity to say, hey, come in, let's discuss policies or what's, you know, what's your three biggest fears with law enforcement? Just something to start the conversation so that we can have some engagement with the youth. Because we're told many, many times from, from the generational thing that said, you know, you need to concentrate on my kids because my decision's made. So we took that and said, okay, we need to, we need to reach out to the kids. And the strongest tool that we had was the SROs because I think most of you knows Daddy's Kirkoff and Tim Cummings and Rob McGruder had a very, very large following of youth. So I'm not sure what that will look like next year. So.
Thank you. Anybody has any question? No, I'm gonna jump. Benita, I have a question for you. The new generation of African-Americans and the way they relate to the police. Has that changed with generations or do you think the fear is still there? I, I heard over and over my friends that are blacks that they have the talk. Some of us, we don't even know what is the talk. So how do we acknowledge that? How do we respect that? How do we understand better what they are going through? And, and, and again, this is a time for us to listen and time to learn. And every single time that I hear people buying more books about what being an anti-racist, what anti-racism looks like. In this day, at times, I think it's a lot of generations that today they have a different idea of what is the meaning of being anti-racist. So educate me, please, Benita.
Yeah, I, you know, I think the chief is right. When he talked about the need to really have conversations in the community and, and not just conversations in general, but multi-generational conversations. Because there are different views and perspectives and no one in any one community, whatever their age is, can speak for others in the community because they have different lived experiences. You know, many of the young people that I've talked to have no more patience. You know, in my generation, it was like, well, things are going to get better. We just have to wait. And many of the young people that I talked to said, we're done. It has to be now, it has to happen now. You know, we can't wait another 400 years. And so, so, so there is that. There, there is with social media, everything that happens to any one of our youths is immediately known to all of the other youths. And so their stories get shared, their experiences get shared, and they get amplified on social media. And, you know, it's, it's like that old axiom that says, you know, if you have great customer service, you tell one person. If you have bad customer service, you tell 10 people. And so those, those, those unfortunate experiences are the ones that get amplified and amplified. And of course, what doesn't help that is what we see on the national media. I had one young person who said, God listened to us and gave us this smartphone. So now we can take videos, you know. So all of that gets amplified. So I think the chief is exactly right. Whether it's to the SROs or, you know, whatever hap, you know, however that relationship rolls out, depending on what actions, you know, how the schools provide education in the fall. But those conversations really do need to continue at all ages, in all communities. Councilmember Van was very instrumental in gathering a group of people from the Vietnamese and Chinese community. And, and I was honored to have an opportunity to, to listen and hear their lived experiences and their deep fear and suspicion of police. You know, not having to do with one-on-one experiences with the Renton Police Department, but through, but from their experiences that have been passed down intergenerationally from their countries of origin or from experiences in this country. You know, there has been, there have been, even in Renton, there has been a lot of targeted harassment, you know, toward people of Asian ancestry, whether, you know, verbal abuse, personal attacks. And again, because of that fear, they aren't reported. So when we go to the chief and say, how many reports do you have? He says, well, we have no reports, but the situations are occurring. And so that is the dilemma. So it's, I think everything the chief said and more that we really need to amp up in every way we can, those two-way conversations. Because it's, you know, social media will take us so far. But it's the two-way conversations where people really have a chance, just as you all are doing tonight, to bring your questions, to better understand policy, to take advantage of the chief's author, to discuss policy and provide input. And I know that he is, has given marching orders to his team to help pursue that. And, you know, I know that he would welcome future support that any of you could provide through your networks and connections. Because this need, these conversations are crucial, and especially at this time.
Thank you, Benita. And again, I want to, for the benefit of the people that are watching us today, to say that how grateful and how lucky we are to have Benita with us these days. She is in every other panel. Every single time that I'm going to try to go, this forum is going to be great, then I see that it's Benita there, one of the panelists. And I want to say that five years ago, we took this so seriously that we decided to hire Benita. Because people don't know that Benita is not just the consultant of the city of Renton. She actually has an office on the city of Renton. She is the equity and inclusion consultant with a year contract with us for the last five years. I don't even know how many cities in the region has, have an equity and, and, and inclusion permanent consultant working with them that they have their own office in the, in the city. But I'm very proud that she is with us and she always bring a great voice to every conversation. Does anybody has more questions about police engagement, committee engagement, sorry, or police policy for the department? Councilmember Benita.
Hi, thank you so much. So I think one of the most important things I learned in my job was show your work, right? And I think one of the things that we have here in this presentation is a lot of work that has been done and a lot of demonstration of what's been done around the eight can't wait specifically. And I was just reviewing the presentation while we're here. And I just, I'm wondering, is there going to be an effort to push out some of this information in a broader community context so that there is an understanding that we, I'm sorry, that the department and specifically the city is engaged in this work very actively and really looking at it? There's a lot of folks who don't watch, you know, the committee as a whole. And how is it that we're going to get to them? Thank you.
Yes, that's one of the things I actually sent it. It's on our agenda for the RAP group next week when we meet, the eight can't wait specifically. But to use the forums that we have in place, we've put it up on our, you know, our webpage. And like Benita said, it only goes so far. So the groups that we have to reach out and talk about those things, to talk about those policies. So it's the topic of discussion at our next RAP meeting. And I will be bringing that same information to the mayor's Inclusion Task Force to push that out. I had a couple of folks that were interested in reviewing policies and having that discussion from that group. And we are still in the process of polling neighbors and neighborhoods as far as communicating, you know, what policies they would like to see or what kind of communication they would like to have. So it's still a work in progress, but we're using what we currently have to get some of that information out in hopes of creating more conversations and hopes of creating more groups. So we do have a couple, you know, the task force, the RAP group. But I want something more specific to just law enforcement. Both those groups have to do with city government. And so maybe we take some of those members and narrow them down to more specific to the law enforcement side of things. So it's, it's coming. And we will create more opportunities to get information out. I've sent out chief's letters and things like that to the community. But we're still working on communicating to those hard-to-reach areas. And so I'm really relying on groups like RAP and the Inclusion Task Force that say, you know, we, we listen to radio, okay? Then maybe we gotta go put something on a radio spot or something like that. So we need to find out how we communicate to those groups and using the resources we have now.
Thank you so much, Chief.
I see that our Public Affairs Deputy Administrator, Preeti Schrader wants to speak. Preeti? You have your micro, you're muted.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to respond to the question in terms of outreach. Many of the things that we talked about here in terms of community forums, et cetera. You know, we'd actually been planning a community forum with the RAP group before some of these national incidents occurred. Our original plan had been to talk to the community with a focus on COVID. And we quickly changed our efforts and focus as soon as some of the concerns emerged. And so as chief mentioned, we had a RAP meeting a couple of weeks ago. And then we have one on the 21st to specifically address their concerns. And we will do everything that we can in terms of coordinating with the community, the communications group, our RAP members, to use this opportunity not only to talk to our community, but also to lay, you know, lay the ground, to share with them everything that we've talked to you about here, that these efforts have been ongoing for the past five years, that, you know, Renton kind of stepped up to the challenge pretty much since 2015, recognizing that these bridges are things that we need to build, that we need to establish accountability, that we need to work on trust and training. Because I think it would be really something that the greater community would, would, you know, love to hear from. And most importantly, and this is something that we've always emphasized, that it's not just a matter of us talking to the community, but for us to listen from the community and open those doors and open those conversations again. So everything that we've heard from you today is something that we will take back and, and, you know, continue those dialogues. Because, you know, that's, that's really what our role is, to, you know, have those conversations and have those forums. So, you know, we'll use all that we have from, you know, the mayor's office, the communications group to work collectively with our community.
Thank you, Preeti. Councilmember Corbin.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, this, this sort of is in keeping with Preeti's comments. But I, I just wanted to, you know, talk about that that's, it's really more than just distinct conversations, really, isn't it? I mean, we really need to build relationships, longstanding, lasting relationships with, with our communities so that, I mean, I learned as a manager that especially when you have a position of power imbalance, that, you know, I could only have maybe a critical conversation once out of every 10 conversations or else the person that I was working with might not trust me that much. That 90% of the communication should be positive and encouraging. And, and then we, we put our officers out there and we've given them so little time. They've got so much workload that they don't have the time to actually sit down with people and chat and have coffee like they should. And instead, they're, you know, issuing tickets or, or trying to disperse crowds or something. But, but we don't give them a chance really to build the relationship and trust. And I, I think that's, to me, one of the things that we, we were hoping to accomplish when we were actually adding to the police force was to give, give a little bit of breathing room so, so officers could, you know, could show up more in cases where there's not, not a conflict. And when I think about the way things have changed, you know, we, I think now when, when, when somebody's, you know, burglarized or their car's prowled even, we, we sometimes just encourage them to fill out a form online and they may not even have contact with an officer then. So it's, it's, it's unfortunate if, it's, it's not fair to the officers and not fair to the public if we, if we got so little time that the only time that they ever interact is when there's conflict. And I think as part of, you know, reworking our approach, we need to make sure that there's more opportunity to, to proactively get to know each other. And another thing I'd like to see is, is open discussions. When there's these national events, we can all look at the, the video taken by bystanders and we can all see, you know, 19 ways that the situation went back. and we can all see, you know, 19 ways that the situation went bad and could have been different. I'd like to see us every time that happens, have those conversations between our officers and the community, you know, what would we do different? How, how did this, you know, how could we not, not see this kind of thing happen anymore? But you need relationships really to keep that going, ongoing. So anyways, I guess in summary, I'd just like to, like to make sure that the chief finds ways that, you know, we can have the bandwidth for the, for our officers, police staff to spend more, you know, have more positive interactions with the public and not feel like they're always having to be in conflict.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any more questions? So Chief Benita, I really want to appreciate all the work that you have done. I have to confess that I have my own implicit bias. And the chief knows that for a long time, I have not felt comfortable being around police officers. And I have to try to combat my own reverse implicit bias and start understanding as well and educate myself about what the police enforcement is about. I'm very happy that blacks and indigenous and people of colors are raising their voice because racism is, is still alive and it should not. And I know that all of us, we agree on that. So I, I know, Chief, Billy, that you are at your department as well as Benita, you're going to work as hard as it needs to make sure that Renton is a safe city for everybody and that, that there is not a mistake that if, as Councilmember Corbin mentioned, it is unfortunate that incidents happen again. No one can point that Renton, in Renton, will happen something like that. Now, we're actively working for, to make sure that those situations do not happen, working actively to engage with our communities in Renton. And, and well, with that, again, I want to thank both of you and this minister. Thank you.